My name is Joanna Winter. I am with the City of Oakland Planning and Building Department. And we really appreciate the help of the Oakland Chinatown Improvement Council and the Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, who are joining us today. Some of them are here in the audience. And have helped us set up this meeting and try and get the word out to Chinatown residents about the changes for the downtown Oakland specific plan. And we heard that there are some conflicts and so not everybody who wanted to attend is able to, and so we are recording. We will not be answering questions in the chat on Zoom. If you are having any technical problems, feel free to post something in the chat and we'll figure out how to help you. But we are going to request that people raise their hand either in person or virtually, raise your virtual hand, or if you can't figure out how to do that, just post in the, write in the chat that you have a question. But we're going to have a presentation to start with and then we will be answering questions and taking comments after the presentation. But we are recording this for anyone who can't attend. He's back. Okay. Yen, would you mind coming up again for interpretation? It might also be good just to have the interpretation because we are recording this. So anybody who wants to see this later will have the interpretation then. Great, then we'll get started with the presentation.
He was saying. You can do it.
You may go.
Did you make it?
Oh, we have.
We have some. Then you can wait a few minutes.
Hey, what's up? You can't hear me.
He said he didn't.
I'm just going to say, I'm sorry.
He asked you. I'm going to open this to you.
He's not, I'm not going to.
I know.
He's not going to. Because you don't know where to go.
I know. I'm going to go.
Then you're going to go here.
He speaks Cantonese.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to talk Cantonese. I want to talk to him.
Yeah, I know. But he doesn't.
I'm going to go.
Now, he's not speaking.
He said he didn't.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
You're going to come.
We'll be giving a presentation and then we'll move on to questions and discussions. We'll be covering an overview of the zoning amendments that are proposed for the downtown specific plan. And then, and then we will discuss specifically how they relate to Chinatown and then we'll talk about the next steps. So the downtown specific plan is a process that started in late 2015. There has been extensive community review, including several meetings here at the Oakland Asian Cultural Center. The public review draft was released in 2019 for public comments. And since then, we've been working on the zoning that will help implement the plan. Once the zoning is complete and has been revised after public comment, city staff will be bringing the zoning amendments and the final draft plan for adoption to city council at the same time. So the relationship of the downtown specific plan to Chinatown relates to the Lake Merritt Station area plan, which if you see on the map here in pink, was completed in 2014. The Lake Merritt Station area plan was a similar plan, also a specific plan. And after that was completed, the downtown specific plan was begun to be developed to fill in the rest of the downtown. So there is some overlap at the edges of the downtown specific plan and the Lake Merritt Station area plan. So you can see that the downtown specific plan is shown in yellow and the overlap is shown in that orange crosshatch. So the zoning that is proposed right now for the downtown specific plan area, some of it relates to what was heard during the station area, the Lake Merritt Station area plan process and was developed with that in mind. And so the plan is for, once the downtown specific plan is adopted and the zoning for the downtown specific plan is adopted as well. We will be turning to the general plan for downtown Oakland. And the general plan is, is a comprehensive plan for the entire city that will include the downtown and Chinatown as well. So during, during that time, during the second phase of the general plan update, when we are planning to update the land use and transportation element, that is the time that we will take, well. So at that time, any strategies that were developed for the downtown specific plan area can be applied to the rest of Chinatown as Chinatown desires. So we are wanting to get feedback from the community in Chinatown because obviously Chinatown is part of the downtown and because any changes that happen in other parts of the downtown will impact Chinatown. But also because we want to get feedback for future zoning changes that will directly be made in Chinatown. So the map now up on the screen shows the, the two areas. The areas that are in the different shades of purple, those are the Lake Merritt Station area plan zones and the areas outside that are the downtown Oakland specific plan zones. One of the key strategies that was developed during the Lake Merritt Station area plan that we are applying in the downtown specific plan is the creation of a, what we're calling a zoning incentive program. And the idea behind the zoning incentive program is that developers would be able to get additional building height and housing density above what is allowed now by providing community benefits. The downtown specific plan has many different implementation strategies in addition to zoning, including compliance with environmental mitigation measures and developing new funding strategies. So the zoning is one of the important strategies of the plan and the zoning will be adopted at the same time as the plan, unlike the other mitigate, the other implementation strategies. So the overarching, the objective for the downtown specific plan, these, these are the objectives. So the overarching one is a vision for equity and access. Yeah, I can describe. So the, the, the goals, the goals include economic opportunity, housing and homelessness, mobility, safety and connectivity, culture keeping, community health and sustainability, and land use and urban form. There's actually a more detailed description of these goals and how the zoning applies to them. So if you want to spend some time on that, we have a summary memo that is available on our website and we can send out this presentation with links afterward. And it is, it's translated into Chinese as well as in English. So important changes to the uses that are allowed in downtown through the zoning that are proposed include the following. Increasing the amount of housing that is allowed in the downtown, primarily in the Victory Court area, which is, if you can see my cursor, it's down on the east side of Jack London. It's currently mostly industrial, but we're envisioning housing there. Allowing more different types of uses on ground floors to help fill vacant commercial spaces. And relaxing rules for permitting entertainment venues, among many other changes. We are also proposing five new special districts, each one having its own goal. These are in the form of overlay or combining zones in addition to the regular zoning. So the first of the five districts is a sea level rise combining zone. And that is to make sure that new construction in high sea level rise areas can adapt to sea level rise. The next one is an arts and culture combining zone that we are piloting in the downtown's Black Arts Movement and Business District, the B A M D. Because this is the city's first and only officially designated cultural district so far. So that's designed to support arts and culture activities and protect businesses and other institutions from displacement. The third is an employment priority zone. You can see on the map, the few locations that are, have very, that are large floor plate, large, large area that is what is needed for office development and are near dense transit like Bart stations, preserving those for employment uses. So on those sites, new residential development would still be allowed, but only if sixty percent of the maximum commercial floor area was developed as commercial space. And the last one is a Green Loop and Lake Merritt Channel Special District. So the idea behind this is to connect the Lake Merritt, the channel and the estuary waterfront with safe, enjoyable transportation and recreational routes, as well as connecting businesses that thrive on foot traffic. This, this zone or overlay zone would integrate new development with the natural environment of the channel as well. The last one, also very important, is an under freeway zone to improve the pedestrian under crossings under the freeways. So this would allow landscaped parking services, but would also try to activate underneath the freeways with temporary uses, pop-up stores, recreation. So in addition to changing land uses and creating special districts, the city is proposing two more things. One is to make some small revisions to the design standards for new buildings. However, those will then be updated throughout the city as through a separate project. And it would, we would also increase height, residential density and commercial floor area if the developer is providing community benefits through a zoning incentive program. The zoning incentive program would require that in order to achieve that new height and density, a developer would, would provide a set amount of a certain, of an already determined type of benefit that they could choose from. So those benefits could be provided on site. And if so, they include affordable housing, below market rate commercial space, streetscape and open space improvements, or public restrooms. Yeah, or instead of providing them on site, instead, a developer could pay fees that would go to those same community benefits or additionally job training. So we have gone over an overview of, of what the, what the city is proposing. The next step. The next steps are to get your feedback and to finish the public comment process. And the way that we're doing that is there is an online survey. There are chalkboard surveys, including one at Lincoln Square Park. And we will also be having a study session about the zoning incentive program, as well as having public hearings. For more information, we will make this presentation and the links available to everybody. It's also available here in person. And there are a lot of written materials on our website about these changes, as well as some videos, which are also translated into Chinese. So to give us your thoughts after tonight, you can comment on an interactive draft that is available on the website using a tool called Conveo, or you can fill out our online survey, or you can email us. So that is it for the presentation. At this point, we are going to take questions. So if you have questions, please, if you're in the audience, go ahead and raise your hand. And if you're online, raise your virtual hand or comment in the chat. We're just handing this over to Strategic Planning Manager Laura Kaminsky, who I'll give her this one, and you can still interpret, who's going to take questions. We have a question from the local audience. I'll just bring this down.
Okay, just before I make my question, I just want to make a comment. I am so appreciative you coming to do this presentation. I know that Chinese translation is not easy. Actually, I know Mr. Ma is watching, so I'm hoping that he's able to read whatever's being translated. Actually, the translation, I would say, on the ones being written up, they are okay. They may not be exactly what people may be able to understand. But I want to say to Mr. Ma, so he knows what I'm talking about in Chinese. So I just want to express that, you know, I know this, the plan is quite important. I just want to let people know that most people are here today, except Ed, and I went way back talking about this, you know, when he was a young kid. Now he's about to be retiring, okay, seriously. But I think the most important issue I want to emphasize to everyone, we actually started this traffic study and the Lake Merritt Plan and the downtown plans in for many years. And especially the traffic study, you know, the program that they call the Jackson Off-Ram. And also later on, they call that Oakland Alameda Access Plan, and which has been going on for twenty-five, thirty years, and I've been involved directly, you know, day one. So I just want people to also realize Chinatown has been doing a lot of traffic study. And one of the things that the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce and Asian Services had done many years ago, we started the first SCRAMBLE system in Oakland Chinatown on Eighth and Webster Street due to the fact that, you know, one of the elderly crossing street got hit and killed. But that was only one of many incidents, and that's how we all got started in the traffic study. So after that, we actually had three additional SCRAMBLE systems besides the one on Eighth and Webster. So we got on to Ninth and Webster, Eighth and Franklin, Ninth and Franklin. So we've been doing this for many years. In addition, we had at least three traffic studies, if not more, okay? So the one in Chinatown, I think we had one or two, and then also because of the Oakland Alameda Access Plan, but they have a different name earlier, so we have another study. And also, I think you see also another study. The interesting part is they don't work together, so they all done it independently. So we spend quite a bit of money, resources, and trying to put things together. So I just want to give a little background for those folks who are listening, you know, so that they have a better understanding where we are coming from and what are we heading into the next steps. But once again, my question would be this. Right now, we spend a lot of time, and of course, I'm so glad that we have this meeting. But I just want to make sure that the first question is, is there going to be additional meetings allowing more people to come in? Because I'm seeing that there will be additional, people can comment online, or they can go to Lincoln and be physically putting their comments so that people can have a chance to say what they think. But in addition, due to the facts that the COVID-19 and the pandemic, and also situation has changed tremendously in Oakland Chinatown, and the business environment is so different from before. Because, like, for instance, for the parkings, we are so concerned about people illegally using it handicap blockers, but now that we don't have any people parking. So that is something that we have to be facing the reality. And in addition, businesses usually close at nine, ten o'clock and on. But now that you see that most people or businesses are closing at about four, five o'clock, so time has changed. So I'm hoping that the study would be able to reflect to the reality of what we need to be focusing on. And I know that the downtown plan may mean well, but you know, one thing that I would like to say on behalf of the Oakland Chinatown residents, businesses, please, plan with us, do not plan for us. So you have to listen to the people, the businesses, so that we're able to have a better plan in the future. So I think that is something that I would love to express. And so I just want to make sure that there will be additional meetings, because I feel bad that, you know, we didn't have that many people. But I remember when we had these meetings, we actually had full of people in this hall, and we have other meetings. But I guess due to the pandemic, people may not want to come out after four or five o'clock. So maybe we need to talk to the folks and the people to see if we can find ways, you know, the Chamber OCIC, all of us together, bring them in together so that you can hear them directly. And actually, many people, they really do not speak, you know, English at all, but I'm sure that they want to participate. Because a lot of time, we have many Chinese or Vietnamese, and all of them, they came in, and they were able to express their concerns. So I'm hoping that there will be additional meetings before you will make the final decision to be implemented, okay?
Hi, Carl, but I think Elaine had her hand up before mine, so I want to be fair about that.
Hi, hi, Mike, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm Elaine, I'm Elaine Penn from Oakland Chinatown Improv Council. So actually, I know Joe might have some questions for this Penn. And Joe, do you want to say something? And I also want to mention, we also have, when we OCIC have the meeting, we will have the Chinese, Vietnamese interpreter, and also we had the same time to translate. So if we can also have this meeting, we provide this service as well. Thank you. So, okay, I'm going to use Chinese. I'm translating my English quickly into...
So this is Laura Kaminsky, the Strategic Planning Manager, and we are starting a general plan. Well, we're working right now on the housing element, the safety element, and the criminal justice element.
Yes, yes, thank you. And we just think we want to encourage more people, just like Mr. Chen said. Yeah, we want to encourage more people that are coming. So OCIC, Oakland Chinatown Improv Council, we have the meeting for providing more bilingual language service, and in the same time, they will save time to have this meeting.
And in addition, in July of 2023, next year, we will be starting the land use and transportation element, which will include looking at all zoning and land uses in all the city, including Chinatown. So there will be more opportunities during that process.
Okay, yes, and Joe, you said you had questions, so, but I know Mike already raised his hand. Maybe after my, Joe, you want to ask your question? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And thanks, Joanna, for the great overview. I'll just say is that, you know, AHS, as well as a lot of our partners in Oakland Chinatown Coalition, we've been involved with the DOSP, as well as other folks in the Chinatown community. One question I had, and I understand the whole idea of the zoning incentive program to, like, you know, by, like, among other things, promoting density to, in order to raise funds for community benefits and pedestrian safety projects, which we're all for. One question I had was, in the zoning incentive program, is there any incentive to try to get developers to build, like, larger units, like family-sized units, like two bedrooms and above? That's something that I know AHS, Oakland Chinatown Coalition, we've always tried to promote with developers as much as we can, so that to try to, you know, attract more families and keep more families in downtown and Chinatown. So just hope that if that gets considered, when, how to shape the zoning incentive program.
You need to write a phone一听, good day, so you're just hold for them for me.
I've gone ahead, Tony here from OCIC. Just our new Oakland Chinatown Improvement Council, I'm one of the executives and co-chair of the land use. I've got a couple of questions. One is the, I believe the 2014 Lake Merritt Safety Plan was approved and effective about 2014. Is there a possibility that we can get a representative that has saw that project through all the way till now, eight years, to kind of really deep dive and understand what went well and what didn't go well? A lot of us are new, and I'd like to kind of see if there's been eight years to see that certain parts of that element, you know, if it went well or if it didn't went well. So then that way, we have better input on this plan.
Yeah, so actually, Ed Manassi was very involved, and Ed's on the, I don't know. Yeah, so we can check in with Ed and see about having sort of a recap and see, you know, what's gone well, what needs improvement and changes that could be made.
And I guess my second question is...
Asian Service Chamber will all be involved, so we'll bring in the information together.
Yeah, second question, and it goes to the zip program. Is there an opportunity for us to really refine that zip program? Because I think the benefits and the options that you give developers, they may choose what works for them, but it, it doesn't really connect with what works for our community or, you know, our neighboring communities. So I think that is something that, you know, when you have these second meetings, when you have these additional meetings with the community, it's something that we can really hone in on. Like, is there a program for the mental health and homelessness underneath the freeways? You can have these pop-ups underneath the freeways, but if you have homelessness, it's really ineffective. I.
Either one of us? All right, we'll use this, oh, that's, yep, now you can hear us. Sorry about that. Yeah, so it sounds like you heard the question. The answer is yes, we can revise and refine the zoning incentive program. Uh, the benefits that as currently related are the ones that the community told us were the most important so far during this process. But as we make changes to Chinatown, we'll have more conversations and there may be other benefits that we change or add. Um, and it, it looks like Joe.
Joe，你有嘢要问系咪？有问题冇？
You, you got silent again. You're unmuted.
这个计划咧，就应该。
仲听唔到你讲嘢。
这个分区计划咧，我认为 就话我哋朝着咁另外一个。
有俾啲时间俾佢哋翻译噶。Translate please.
Okay. He said, we have been living in Chinatown for many years, and one of the things he's brought up is building heights.
Okay,你继续讲啦。
第二个咧。等我翻译先。后面继续讲啦。
Translate please.
I cannot hear very well, what he's saying is on my phone to me.
就是听帮你翻啦，比你。
So Miss, hello. Hello.
边个做翻译咁，该问。
Okay, let me translate, so basically Miss Ma is talking about, you know, the zoning, making sure that, you know, when zoning, you know, with the high residentially, I mean, like a building with many seniors in a, in a high-rise, and would that be best not to have like, you know, entertainment business right next to it? Because, you know, the complaint, which I know, the Hotel Oakland, they've been having problem, and I've been dealing with it, and I actually, I was able to shut down once, twice, and I hate to do it again. So that means, you know, the entertainment business along Fourteenth Street, which has been pretty bad, because I pray across the street. So I think what Miss Ma is talking about, you know, if we can making sure that if the entertainment area, so it should be state entertainment, but when you're mixing with, you know, residential and, and loud music entertainment, it wouldn't work well. Now, I, I'll talk the essence of what he just said, okay, just to give a shot. So basically, Miss Ma is talking about that the land use, land use is pretty important in Chinatown. And basically, he mentioned that, you know, when HNO Service Chamber got together for that, it was good. Also OCIC now, they also have, you know, the committee also working on zoning on that, which was good. And in addition, they wanted, yes, also many organizations also part of it. But most importantly, making sure that all this planning and all that, you would have the opportunity listening to the residents and the people in Oakland Chinatown. That would be something that he wished to see, just like what I mentioned earlier, maybe more, more hearings and more seminar, seminar, but making sure that we'll, 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 we'll be able to bring the people in.
我嘅意见就讲咁多，多谢。
Okay, thank, thank you, okay, understood. There are two, two main points there that we caught, the, the one about the conflicts between entertainment businesses and residential, and then reiterating the importance of listening to Chinatown residents and businesses. So thank you very much. Are there other, other questions or comments? Yes.
Hi, my name is Jessica Chan, I'm Executive Director of Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce. And I really need to appreciate Joanna and her team to bring the meeting to Oakland Chinatown, because this is very important. You know, this plan already talked a long time ago when I was working on my former job. And then I noticed that, you know, Chinatown is die-cut from this plan, but we're definitely going to impact by this plan. And when we are still waiting for Lake Merritt Plan to kick off, you know, to review, and also the general plan is, is also under, undergo planning. And so how these three plans, you know, no matter how they plan, and we, we want to make sure all, everything will be able to cover and then solve the problem, not, not cause more issues. Because a lot of time, sorry to say, a lot of time, there are some plans, you know, like Carl say, time changes and then new issues, all, all issues are all different. So when we have the long-term planning process, we probably have to address that recent concern and then also the issues. And so my, my, my question gonna be, so any backup plan? Or maybe we should set aside like the team to discuss once we start to planning? And then how we can carry those issues and problem to be able to work with the other plan? Mr. Mai, is that okay? I speak Mandarin?
Thank you. And I think, you know, you're speaking to the importance of being able to update the plan as circumstances change. And, and one thing that we're doing with the downtown specific plan is we're proposing that there would be sort of an, an ongoing implementation committee, like a, a community members involved in ongoing implementation. And hoping we might propose something like that for the general plan as well, that will evolve over time. And the point is very much like taken, and we are very concerned about that and about your point about making sure that we're not actually making situations worse, we're actually making them better. We're definitely are in alignment with that. Are there any more questions from anyone online or in the audience? As I said, we'll, we can send out the, the presentation, which has links to many more materials. And we are also very happy to answer questions by email or have additional conversations. So, so please, yeah, Carl. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is Carl again. The reason why I want to talk to, not only to friends here in, in, in South Oakland, but also those online, I see some of the names. So I'm hoping that Josh, I know Josh has been retired, but Josh Simon has been also very critical, I mean, important, helping us, the planning. Definitely, I have, I'm seeing Mike, I know Josie was also helping and many people, but definitely, Ed, I, I know that before you retire, we definitely need you to come back, okay? Because you, you and I, we, I think you have the, the most knowledge, you know, throughout the entire process, so which is absolutely important. I know Angela also pretty involved with the city. So I think many of you might request is, please, you know many people and they are concerned, you know, this plan, but also for Chinatown community, please bring in people you know to the next meeting, okay? But in addition, I also asking the city, next time when you plan this meeting again, maybe we can, we can help to plan better. Maybe just like, you know, I know sometimes what you may want to do, I want you to patronize our businesses and buy some snacks and drinks, so we can inviting our seniors to come and joining us. Maybe the time may be, maybe around three to four, so most of our folks before they go home and they can join us. So my main message is, our friends, you know, here today, please bring in more people, because planning is important. As I mentioned earlier, we need to plan together, so we don't want to be planned after the fact and then people will complain. And, you know, quite often we see that, you know, when they plan for us without your input, by the time when you complain, it's a little bit too late. So let's plan together, so that's my message. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and please do sign up on our website so that you can get updates when we do have future meetings, because we do want you all to continue participating. Well, I think we are going to wrap up for this evening. Thank you all for coming, whether online or in person. And bearing with our technical difficulties, we really appreciate your participation in this process. Bye.
Thank you.